Let us pray. Dear God, today we are especially grateful for spring renewal, both in its transformation of our environment and our spirit. We pray today for a spirit of cooperation, reconciliation, and forgiveness throughout our city, state, nation, and world. Furthermore, God, as public officials, we will continue to find common ground in the execution of our duties that we may best serve the will of our residents and continue to promote public policy that is just and that leads to efficient and effective governance, always mindful of those on the margins, those most vulnerable among us. As we consider the legislation that is before us, please grant us the wisdom to be vigilant stewards of the earth you have so graciously given to us. Please watch over our young people and help us to provide them with the experiences and facilities that will help them reach their full potential as members of this great community. And finally, we ask your continued guidance of the brave men and women of our public safety forces who work so hard and sacrifice so much for the city that they love. All of this we ask in thy holy name. Amen.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Pailey Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Say your second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Pailey Tyson, President Ginther.
This week's communications received by the City Clerk's Office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Klein.
Council President Ginther, I do have a resolution I'd like to table for one week. It's 41X 2014. I'd like to move to table it for one week.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Pailey Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you.
President Pro Tem Miller. Councilmember Mills.
Yes, I do. Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to present Resolution 0040X-2014 to commemorate the 2014 Dr. Robert J. Fass Memorial AIDS Walk, Central Ohio, and to commend its organizers, sponsors, volunteers, and participants for their dedicated efforts to raise awareness of HIV/AIDS. I ask Emily Tony and Emily Parsons to please address the podium. Ms. Tony and Ms. Parsons are both from AIDS Resource Center. As they walk up, I'll share a bit of information. I'm sure they'll be glad to share additional information about the importance of this resolution. The walk will take place on April 19th, but more importantly, what takes place each and every day is that 16,000 Ohioans are currently living with HIV or presumed infected but undiagnosed. One in five people infected with HIV do not know that they are infected, and nearly 1,000 new cases of HIV are diagnosed in Ohio every year. Franklin County unfortunately has led the state with the highest number of new infections in each of the past six years. The goal for this year's walk is 1,800 walkers or runners and $175,000 in funds for HIV/AIDS services. I'm going to ask Ms. Tony or Ms. Parsons to include in their comments what I think is one of the exciting features of this year's walk includes the camp that is now a part of AIDS Resource Center I'd love to share with the listening and viewing audience. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills, Council President Ginther, and members of council. AIDS service organizations like AIDS Resource Center Ohio and the other benefiting agencies are serving more than 4,000 HIV-positive Ohioans. And as Councilmember Mills said, there are 16,000 people living with HIV in the state of Ohio. The scariest statistic to share with you today is the highest number of new infections annually is among young people between the ages of 13 and 24. So this is still a problem here, not just in our city, but in our country. So our ARC Ohio Medical Center is currently treating more than 600 people right here in Columbus that are living with HIV and have very limited access to resources. So that's a statistic that we're really proud to share with you. More than ever, we are driven to find and link these individuals to care, and that's really what this walk is all about. So the newest addition to AIDS Resource Center Ohio is an organization called Camp Sunrise. We provide a week of camp for kids who are affected or infected with HIV. And so they have a team in the walk this year, and we're fundraising. Those kids will go to camp the last week in June and spend 4th of July with us. There are about 100 children from around the state who attend that camp every year, and it's life-changing for them. So we're happy to be giving more resources to that organization and to take them under the ARC Ohio umbrella, and we appreciate your support in this community to help us fulfill our goals. So I think Councilmember Mills is going to walk. We're not sure. Devon said she might, so we're really excited. We'd love to have any of you there as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from other members of council?
You're all welcome.
If not, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Pailey Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I'm going to encourage every member of council to join us and also listening and viewing audience on April 19th. Very, very important day. Join us in a walk or run that will save lives and continue to support other members of our community with something that we need to address and get our arms around. So we need the support. Get your tennis shoes on, lace up, and see you out at McPherson Park on April 19th. And looking forward to the walk that day. And I will be walking, not running. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Pailey.
I don't have any resolutions, but I do have a couple announcements. I would first like to announce that it's Councilmember Tyson's birthday on Friday. So happy birthday, Councilmember Tyson. And then I would also like to recognize Executive Director Joyce Carver Keller of the Ohio Jewish Communities and congratulate her for receiving the prestigious 2014 Miram's Cup Award from the Columbus Chapter of Adassa. Congratulations, Joyce Carver Keller, and thank you for everything that you do for our community. Thank you, President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Pailey. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you. Yes, I do have a resolution this evening, and I am going to ask a number of individuals to walk towards the podium. First of all, Angela Dawson, who is the Director of the Ohio Commission on Minority Health, Ryan Johnson, who directs minority health for the Columbus Public Health, Drew Bagley, who is...
Drew.
Drew, who is a former commissioner on the West Side, who runs a health initiative for us, and Fred Johnson, Officer of Minority Health, and Sue Ellen Bennett. I think they're all here from Columbus Public Health. And the resolution is 0043X. It is to declare April of 2014 to be Minority Health Month in Columbus. Whereas in 1989, the Ohio Commission on Minority Health developed the concept of a high-visibility campaign designed to focus on health awareness and disease prevention. And whereas the resulting 30-day campaign will become the Minority Health Month, which has been recognized nationally since 2000. Whereas the five goals of Minority Health Month are to provide information for individuals to practice disease prevention, to promote healthy lifestyles, and to showcase resources for providers of grassroots healthcare and information, to bring attention to the desperate health conditions between Ohio's minority and non-minority populations, and to declare support for ongoing efforts to improve minority health year-round. And whereas the Columbus Department of Public Health has established an Office of Minority Health with a mission of providing leadership on the reduction of health inequities in minority communities in Columbus and its surrounding areas by serving as a mechanism for local governments to produce constant data, by providing a presence for issues of minority health, by institutionalizing efforts to eliminate health disparities, and by serving as a conduit of information for trends and emerging concerns between the Ohio Commission on Minority Health and local communities. And whereas the Office of Minority Health fulfills its mission by monitoring and reporting the health status of minority populations, mobilizing community partnerships, and local actions, developing policies and plans to support health efforts, and informing, educating, and empowering the community. And whereas over the past year, the Office of Minority Health has directed nearly 1,000 community residents through 16 consumer empowerment, health awareness, and men's health workshops, and 18 Somali-Latino community health forums. And whereas over the past year, the Office of Minority Health has facilitated over 8,000 language interpretation transition services. And whereas the Office of Minority Health has participated with community partners with Adam H., Ohio Health, and United Way. And whereas the Office of Minority Health impacted 400 residents with interactive and educational informational activities during the celebration of last year's Minority Health Month. And whereas the Office of Minority Health is working with more than 30 community partners to present programming throughout April that will bring attention to the health issues such as hypertension, substance abuse, domestic violence, nutrition, and wellness in the minority community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council has hereby recognized April of 2014 as Minority Health Month in the City of Columbus. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Pailey Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Thank you, President Ginther. Councilwoman Tyson, esteemed members of Columbus City Council, the greatest city in the state of Ohio. I bring you greetings from the staff and the commissioners of the Ohio Commission on Minority Health. The success or failure of any government in its final analysis must be measured by the well-being of its citizens. Nothing can be more important to the state than the status of the health of its people. April is Minority Health Month. A 30-day wellness campaign started in Ohio in 1989 by the Ohio Commission on Minority Health, becoming a national celebration in 2000. We would like to say thank you for your ongoing support of this effort. We know that the Columbus Local Office of Minority Health is in the extremely capable hands of Mr. Ryan Johnson, who is the Director of our local office, and we certainly encourage you to continue on your focus on health issues, and we thank you for your recent attention to infant mortality. Mr. Johnson?
Now, how am I going to follow that? Good evening. On behalf of my colleagues that are here this evening, thank you, and Dr. Teresa C. Long, Health Commissioner of Columbus Public Health, I would like to say thank you for this resolution of expression. My name is Ryan E. Johnson, and I'm the Program Director for the Office of Minority Health at Columbus Public Health. The mission of the Office of Minority Health at Columbus Public Health is to provide leadership to reduce health inequities in minority communities of Columbus and its surrounding areas, and we achieve this through our four core competencies: monitor and report the health status of minority populations, inform, educate, and empower people, mobilize community partnerships and actions, and last, develop policies and plans that support health efforts. I've provided each of you with a packet of information highlighting our accomplishments for the past year as well as activities during April, which is Minority Health Month. In celebration of Minority Health Month, the West Side Community Health Advisory Committee, facilitated by Drew Bagley, thank you for coming, and the Office of Minority Health at Columbus Public Health, were conducting two events. The first one is the Minority Health Month Kickoff Event on April the 5th, and that's going to be at Gladden Community House at 10 o'clock in the morning, 183 Hawks Avenue. The second, Family Fun Night on April 9th at Jay Ashburn at 6:30, 85 Slough-Clarendon Avenue. Community forums, we also talked about, are also coordinated by our office to provide Columbus residents education on a variety of health issues tailored for specific communities. We'll be providing a Latino and a Somali community forum during April again, which is Minority Health Month. A special thank you to Jesus Savaya, who is here, and Hibu Noir, who is not here with us. They are our Columbus Public Health staff who work tirelessly to coordinate these initiatives. The Latino community forum focusing on healthcare resources will be held on April 16th at the Guadalupe Center at 11:30, 441 Industry Drive. The Somali community forum focusing on mental health will be held on April the 26th at the Somali Community Association of Ohio, 3422 Cleveland Avenue, starting at 2:00 p.m., and we would like to see all you guys there and participate. For more information on the Office of Minority Health at Columbus Public Health, or any information that I provided to you in the packet, please contact me, again, Ryan Johnson. My number is 645-7335, or you can reach me at rejohnson@columbus.gov. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Ryan. I don't know, Drew, I give a few comments to make, or no, thank you. Well, thank you for the work that you do to support our community and to continue to raise the awareness of the issues around the disparities with minority health and work really diligently to make sure that we continue to lower those disparities and that everyone has an opportunity to live a quality and healthy life. Thank you so much. Oh, Councilmember Craig, I'm sorry, you have something to say.
I just wanted to make, I just, thank you very much, Ms. Tyson, for offering this very, very important resolution for our listening and viewing audience. I know all of you, and I'm deeply grateful for your work. You mentioned, you talked about competencies, because we know that there are health disparities, and I know that you're talking about them, we're being very vocal about it. I know that council has engaged in the work in infant mortality under the leadership of President Ginther and the committee, and I appreciate your longstanding work around these issues. I just would continue to have you continue to talk about these issues, to highlight them so that the community understands these are very critical, very, very important issues for all of our families and children, and certainly appreciate your work in this area. So again, my thanks, and we appreciate, not just in April, certainly we highlight the issues, but year-long, when we talk about all of the issues that concern our families and children. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. And lastly, I would say that, I mean, this is, it's a serious, because the disparities are really great, as Herschel, Councilmember Craig, I'm sorry, mentioned, that the work around infant mortality, how our minority babies are dying, the issue around obesity and diabetes. I mean, there's so many issues here that are so different than other individuals in our community, and I thank you for working each and every day on trying to remove those disparities and so people, again, can have healthy lives. Thank you so very much.
Just a couple announcements, and the first one, I think Nancy Bechtel is prepared to say some, to mention, to have some comments around the mumps in our community.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmembers, I'd like to update you on the mumps outbreak that we're having. So as of today, we have 111 cases for are hospitalized. Eighty-nine of the cases are affiliated with OSU. We do consider this a significant outbreak, as outbreaks go. The mumps have serious side effects, including meningitis, hearing loss, and reproductive problems in men and women. As of today, we are investigating a case of deafness and four cases of orchitis, which is testicular swelling, which can lead to sterility in men. The symptoms of mumps, the initial symptoms include fever malaise, which is like muscle aches, headaches, and the traditional chipmunk cheeks. The incubation period's 12 to 25 days, but people can shed virus before they become symptomatic. We encourage people to take precautions against getting or giving the mumps if they have them. Anyone who has not received a dose of the MMR, the measles/mumps and rubella vaccine, or who have only received one of the doses should be vaccinated as soon as possible. People born before 1987 are likely to have received just one of the MMR doses and should be vaccinated. And then if parents or guardians have objected to the vaccine and children have not been vaccinated, they should be vaccinated as soon as possible. Children are typically vaccinated on their first birthday and then again at four to six years of age. We are doing a special MMR clinic at the Health Department for people, if they want to come in and get vaccinated. We have extended hours, and I'm happy to share those with you. And if you think that you are getting the mumps or you're symptomatic, we encourage you to contact your physician as soon as possible. Make sure that you use good hand washing, cover your cough, cover your sneeze, because it's a droplet spread on how it's passed from person to person.
Thank you for the update. And lastly, I just want to introduce the newest person to my staff, and it is Jason Powell, who is my legislative analyst, and just want to recognize Jason, who's... Thank you. He decided to come to Columbus from Washington, DC, so he knows how important our city is and the work that we're doing. So welcome, Jason. And again, I also want to just give a thank you to Hosana Tekia, because for the last three months, just having one staff member and with the work that we've had to do out of our committee, it was, been a yeoman's job. And just want to say congratulations and thank her for the work that she's done. And thank you. Oh, and tonight is the last night, if you haven't signed up, healthcare.gov. Tonight is the last night of the evening to sign up. So if you don't have healthcare and you are wanting to try to get healthcare, go to healthcare.gov. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. I'd like to introduce to everyone here an intern that is going to be with us through Monday, June 2nd, Mackenzie Hartman. Mackenzie, if you'd stand up and be recognized. Mackenzie is a sophomore from Clintonville, and she's at the Metro Early College High School. And she, her father's a professor of psychology at Ohio State, and they're getting ready. I think once she wraps up here in the summer, she's going to be practicing at Sprichensie Her Deutsch. They're going to be in Germany for a year. He's part of a research project there, but we'll have the family back a year from June. So Mackenzie's going to be with us until they get ready to leave. So welcome, and if you see her in the next couple of weeks, say hello.
City Auditor, any comments? City Attorney? Judge Barrows?
No, thank you, sir.
Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the Consent Action portion of the agenda? If not, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the City Clerk?
So move.
Say your second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Pailey Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day Agenda legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Public Safety and Judiciary Committee ordinance 643-2014. Public Utilities Committee ordinance 2967-2013. Ordinances 500, 623, 633, and 648-2014. Development Committee ordinance is 662, 720, 721, 722, 723-2014. Rules and Reference Committee ordinance 773-2014. And Zoning Committee ordinance is 631 and 702-2014.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 34X and 38X-2014. Finance Committee ordinance is 678 and 712-2014. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance 538-2014. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 600, 604, 647, 654, 656-2014. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee ordinance is 305, 601-2014. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 424, 425, 436, 437, 453, 463, 514, 528, 595-2014. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 360, 376, 475, 655, 708, 741-2014. Technology Committee ordinance is 177, 326, 413, 652, 685-2014. Development Committee ordinance is 666, 701, 709, 745, 749-2014. Administration Committee ordinance 731-2014. And appointments from the Mayor's Office numbered A0028, 30, and 31-2014.
Thank you. If there aren't any questions or comments, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions?
So move.
Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein? Miller?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes, with the exception of 0305-2014, on which I am abstaining.
Pailey? Tyson? President Ginther?
Yes, Consent Agenda carries. We now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight, we'll be introducing Resolution 0029X-2014. This legislation will accept the capital improvements budget, capital improvements program for 2014 through 2019, as described herein as a primary guide for the capital improvements budget ordinance and to declare an emergency. By this resolution, City Council accepts the capital improvement program, the CIP, for 2014 through 2019, and makes it the primary guide for the 2014 capital improvements budget. The CIP also reflects the remaining priorities from the 2008 voted bond package and the priorities identified in the 2013 voted bond package.
And Director Kowski, any comments?
Chair Tyson, President Ginther, and members of council, I just wanted to thank you for working so closely with my office in regard to the capital improvements program as well as the budget, because it's always a pleasure to work with your staff and other members of council. This will, you know, when we look at the next piece here and we talk about our capital budget, there's nearly, if you look at the new funding as well as carryover funding and the other sources of funding that go into our capital budget, we'll be putting nearly a billion dollars worth of project dollars into the community and into our neighborhoods, which will help improve our quality of life as well as support existing jobs and create new jobs here in the city of Columbus. So again, thank you for your work on the budget.
Thank you, Director. Auditorian, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Auditorian, do you have any comments you'd like to make on this? Thank you. Okay, with that, I move to amend and submit to the clerk.
Second. Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Pailey Tyson, President Ginther.
I move for, move to adopt.
Second. Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Pailey Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to move to take ordinance 0683-2014 from the table.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Pailey Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Now, I move to adopt a capital improvements budget for the 12 months ending December 31st of 2014, or until such time as a new capital improvements budget is adopted, establishing a project budget for the capital improvements, requiring legislative authority in 2014, and to repeal... and to repeal ordinance number 0645-2013 as amended and to declare an emergency. Again, this ordinance establishes the 2014 capital improvements budget, or known as the CIB. The budget represents a plan for the expenditure of monies in 2014 for a variety of capital improvements projects. Excuse me. This new funding is totaled for $735.6 million. $247 million is... Represents additional capacity from the Special Income Tax Fund, known as SIT, and $460 million of this amount, where nearly 62% is supported by the enterprise revenues and Miss Lane's other small revenues, such as internal service fees, federal and state funding sources, and not the sit-aside of income tax dollars. Collectively, the CIB includes new investments that will improve our roads, bridges, sidewalks, and other critical public infrastructure. It has had an unprecedented $33 million investment in road resurfacing. This budget also funds other major construction projects, like the demolition and development taking place at 109 North Front Street. This... The CIB also includes funding that will equip our safety forces with the tools they need to improve their effectiveness. It invests in our recreation facilities and public spaces, which is in... Right now, we have an unprecedented amount of dollars that are going to recreation and parks. It adds streetlights. It also continues to add funding to demolish vacant and abandoned properties. It also supports our quality of life by supporting the arts. I'd like to note that $7.3 million of the $735.6 million is new funding by this council, through the amendments of this council, and will improve our... Will focus on home repair, pothole repair, public safety, snow removal, recreation parks, and accessibility for the disabled. Ultimately, the capital improvements budget is about leveraging dollars and helping communities to thrive by strengthening neighborhoods, fortifying our safety forces, and economic expansion. I'm proud to have had the opportunity to serve our residents through this budget process. I also like to thank this council, each member and their staff, the mayor and his administration, and all the city departments and the directors. I especially want to thank Finance Director Paul Rakowski and his team, Rob Newman and Kyle Seaverhart, as well as Mr. Auditorian. Additionally, I want to thank the Legislative Research Office staff, Kate Pashati and Brian Clark, and also my staff, Jason Powell and Hosanna, as well as Columbus residents for your work and your commitment to making investments that will allow our community to continue to thrive. And with that, I am going to... Are there any questions or comments? Then I'm going to open the floor. We have some public speakers that want to come and speak on our... On the capital budget. First is Chip Santa. He's a vice chair for the Public Art Commission. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks so much. It's a privilege to serve on the Columbus Art Commission, and I'm just here to speak and support. There is some small amount of funding that is a huge step forward in promoting the arts, which have economic value to the community, a cultural value, so it's very exciting. The mayor's leadership and in the executive order, as well as your leadership in providing funding, is terrific. So, thanks. The Art Commission is... Has worked on a couple of public art projects, some of which may be slightly more controversial than others, but it moves us forward. There's also maintenance money, working with the parks and recreation to maintain the Schiller Art... The Schiller Park statue, et cetera. So, I'm just here to simply say thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Any questions or comments? Great cities have public art, so...
Yes.
Thank you. We're a great city.
Absolutely. Thanks so much.
That's exactly right. Mr. Tony Johnson? Thank you. Then the next speaker would be Nikki Scarpetti. Oh, Tony, I'm sorry. Wait, Nikki. Tony, I didn't see you. I'm sorry. Mr. Johnson, sorry.
I'd just like to thank City Council for the resolution for my father. I know he'd be very proud of the award that was made to Driving Park. I know he's smiling down on us, and I'd like to thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony, for coming down. Councilmember Paley?
Mr. Johnson, your father was one of the best figures this city has ever seen, as far as community leaders for the Driving Park area. And I remember him sitting in court at the Driving Park Library for many, many, many years, where I and others listened to his great wisdom, and he helped us all become the great leaders that the city needs. We thank you for loaning him to us during the time period that he worked for the city, and I assure you that he is shining down on us now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Craig?
Thank you very much, Ms. Tyson. Mr. Johnson, let me also echo the comments of Ms. Paley and all of my colleagues. This is a great day for the city of Columbus, and certainly, we thank Mr. Johnson. I don't know if words are adequate enough, and you know, we've had this conversation in public and otherwise, and we're deeply grateful for his service to the city and what it'll mean for not only that community, but what it means for our entire city and nation. We recognize Mr. Johnson's service to our nation and the military. So, God bless you, and we're all so proud to be a part of this great initiative today.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Thank you. The next speaker will be Nikki Scarpetti, representing the Columbus Metropolitan Library.
On behalf of Columbus Metropolitan Library, I would like to thank Columbus City Council, Mayor Coleman, and his administration for supporting the library's aspirational building program through the capital budget process. We are building or expanding seven library branches in the city of Columbus over the next three years in order to better meet community needs and better serve our customers. The city's capital budget process has provided support for infrastructure improvements, which will help make this possible. We are grateful for your assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Jennifer Adair.
Chair Tyson, President Ginther, members of City Council, good evening. My name is Jennifer Adair, Chair of the North London Area Commission. First, I'd like to thank you all for creating a budget that focuses on neighborhoods and safety. I'd like to speak to you about two pieces of that. The first is the proposed amendment by Councilmember Klein to increase the funds to the fire facility renovation line item. This increase will allow for much-needed structural improvements to fire stations throughout Columbus, and in particular, Station 16. As one of the busiest stations in Columbus, Station 16 is located at Weber and McGuffey Roads in the heart of North London. Dedicated firefighters work to not only keep North London safe, but all of Columbus. Station 16 is also home to one of the country's most innovated heavy rescue equipment engines. Built in 1952, Station 16 is one of the last stations in Columbus to see major renovations. Over the past year, the commission has become more concerned with structural problems at the station, and in January, we toured. We found several major issues, including deterioration of the bay floor, leakage into the basement, air quality concerns due to mold and dust, potential health risks from falling ceiling tiles, and tripping on cracked floors, general conditions of disrepair, and inadequate and unsafe parking. We sent our documentation to you in early February, and Councilmember Klein went and toured the facility. After that tour, he has informed the commission that the station would become a priority for renovated funds. Although we know there are lots more steps in this process, we wanted to thank Councilmember Klein and Legislative Aides James for acting in an expeditious manner to allow council to consider these amendments tonight. The North London Area Commission will continue to work with the city to improve, renovate, or relocate and rebuild Station 16, so it remains at the heart of North London. We seek a solution, not just a Band-Aid. The second item I'd like to address quickly concerns the funds for the City Hall campus. Nearly $57 million will be allocated to purchase, renovate, demolish several buildings to support this project. Other buildings will be sold or vacated to complete the overall vision for downtown Columbus. One of the buildings that will be sold is the I-71 complex. Although the city's master plan does not contemplate selling this building, the Director of Finance said it would cost more than the $42 million the building is worth. While the commission understands and appreciates that having a beautiful downtown is a benefit to all residents, creating yet another vacant property in North London does not support the commission's overall vision for our community. Because neighbors are concerned about the process for the sale, the future use of property, and impact to the neighborhood, the commission asks that the city hold public meetings, seek input, and work with us in the future on this project. Thank you so much for allowing North London to speak with you tonight. If you have any questions, I'll address them.
Thank you, Ms. Adair.
Thank you.
And for coming down and sharing your comments. And with that, any other questions or comments on the budget? I move for passage as amended.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The men now move to Health and Human Services? Thank you. The only ordinance in that area, in 0698-2014, is to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a reproductive health and wellness program grant from the Ohio Department of Health, and to authorize the appropriation of $243,572 in grant money and fee revenues from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. This... The women's health services that this... The dollars will provide for breast cervical cancer, project referrals for underserved women, screening for domestic violence, substance abuse and depression, screening for sexually transmitted infections, and reproductive life planning counseling. This source of funds, last year, sold over 1,400 women, and this will be a 4% increase in funding. With that, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Councilmember Tyson, I should not let you go to Health and Human Services just yet. There was one more piece in finance I think you wanted to present for consideration. 0706?
That is correct. And it is... Order 0706-2014, it is to authorize a transfer of $119,000 within the General Fund operating budget, to authorize expenditure of $946,354 from the Property Management Fund, and $607,829 from the 2014 General Fund for payments to Paradigm Properties of Ohio LLC for the third year of the facilities management agreement, and to declare an emergency. In January 2014, the Real Estate Management Office issued an RFP for professional building management services for the Jerry Hammond Center and the Franklin County Municipal Court Building, to assist the city in property maintaining and operating these buildings in a professional and cost-effective... In a cost-effective manner. $964,354 for the Jerry Hammond... For the Jerry Hammond facility, and $607,829 for the Municipal Court Building. And this legislation, the FMA, provided for initial one-year term of May 1st through 2012 through April 30th of 2013, and four consecutive one-year renewal terms for each subject to the appropriation of necessary funds by Columbus City Council and certification of funds by the city auditor. And with that, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And the last ordinance I have this evening is in Workforce Development. If I could move to that department, to that... And I'm going to ask Tariqa Cradle and Jose Feliciano to walk toward the podium. And this ordinance is to authorize Executive Director of Civil Service Commission to enter into a not-for-profit service contract with the Central Ohio Workforce Investment Corporation, known as COIC, for the 2014 Restoration Academy project, and to authorize the expenditure of $200,000 from the General Fund, and to declare an emergency. Each year, this ordinance focuses on the reentry, and each year in Ohio, prisons release 22,000 inmates, and 2,000 of them return to Columbus. And the job market for them is often very bleak. So, we have Restoration Academy, which is a program that provides services, including health assessments, life and occupational skills, training, nutrition, fitness programs dedicated to assist participants with successfully transitioning back into the community. And this year, the Restoration Academy is expanding to a class of 50 participants. And I want to give thanks to Director Amy DeLong and the mayor for certainly coming up with this program since... In 2012. And thank you for embracing this program, Director DeLong, and ensuring the success of the program. And now, I'm going to turn the podium over to Tariqa. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Tyson, President Ginther, and other members of council, good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share the success of Restoration Academy. I would like to provide a little historical data concerning the first two years of the program. In 2012 and 2013, the Restoration Academy had 15 participants started the program. Of the 15, 12 graduated each year. That is a graduation rate of 80% for Restoration Academy. In 2012, all 12 were employed after graduation. The 2012 class still has 10 graduates employed with the same employer. All of the 2013 graduates were also employed upon graduation. Currently, we have seven graduates who are employed in the public sector, and there are three who are employed in the private sector. As you can see, this program has been a new beginning that has provided a stable working environment for participants. And it's a really great program, and I truly want to thank you all for taking consideration for the program. It is a great cause. I loved one... I love working this. It's an honor. So, now, I will turn this over to one of our partner agencies, who is Jose Feliciano from COIC, and he's going to talk about our exciting program for 2014.
Thank you. Chair Tyson, President Ginther, all the City Council members, I want to thank all of you for your support for this program. This program essentially takes 50 participants who have an employment barrier and try to overcome through health and wellness programs, job readiness training, occupational skills training, and provide them with employment opportunities for gainful, stable employment, long-term employment. These are individuals who have work experiences, who have education levels that make them marketable, but through bad circumstances, faulty judgment, bad circumstances, have an employment barrier that needs to be addressed. Restoration Academy is the mayor concept of being able to address this employment barrier and working with the city, working with community agencies. Restoration Academy hopes to provide stable employment to this population. It is also more than just 50 participants, as many of our programs and services treat, try to provide services to all restored citizens. Basically, Restoration Academy, the goal is to connect participants to positions and training opportunities that will help meet the needs of local employers. We are recruiting, and we are trying to secure both direct employment and internship sites for at least 50 participants, but we know we will exceed that goal. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And this, Jose, and I'm going to have... No, Councilmember Paley is also a co-sponsor on this legislation. I'm going to let her say a few words.
Thank you.
I too would like to thank Director Long and COIC for their work on Restoration Academy. Collaboration and partnerships are one of the great things about the city of Columbus, and what makes this city a great place, is being able to work with each other on governmental or private... or private partnerships and cooperations. And this is definitely a program that's worth working on. I kind of relate back to when we, Judge Barrows first started the Special Entity Dockets, and how some of these people just need the tools to help themselves. And once they do that, they become very productive members of our community, as well as save us lots of money. So I appreciate the collaboration and cooperation, and hope that this program grows to be as successful as the Special Entity Dockets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before you walk away, I mean, pass the legislation, I just want to say to Tariqa, you have done an amazing job. Certainly, you graduated the first program, and all the other classes certainly stand on the shoulders of the individuals that were in the pilot program. And I know you're doing a fantastic job in ensuring that each of the individuals that are within the program have an opportunity to be successful. And you certainly stand as the beacon because of you going through the program, and obviously being employed for the last two years with the city of Columbus. So I really thank you. As I mentioned, if you think about 2,000 people coming back to this community, unless we figure out a way to help make sure not only the city, but also the private sector and other organizations begin to hire individuals, if we don't do that, we're going to have more, you know, obviously, if you can't get a job, we know what's going to happen, you're just going to be involved in behaviors that are not going to be successful to that individual and to their family. So I, I'm so pleased that we have this, this program in our city, and not only does it change the lives of the individuals that go through the program, but certainly that individual comes from a family. And to be able to be at the graduation, and to see the families that are here, and how excited that they are that that, that their family member has now gotten more so a release on life, this is just a, it's an amazing program. It's life-changing, and thank you for the work that the two of you are doing to ensure that individuals get an opportunity to move forward in their lives. And just thank you so much. Councilwoman Craig?
Just well-spoken. Many of us have attended the graduations, and let me say to you also, I am so deeply appreciative. I know this is not a giveaway. It's, it's very intense, it's demanding, there's an expectation of excellence, and we're deeply appreciative, certainly to the mayor and the administration, Director DeLonge, and all those involved with it. It's money well-spent to help people and their families, and because we want to make certain that people are making productive change, and what it means, as it's already been said, not only for them, but what it means for their families and their children. And we look forward to another successful year, and I'm very encouraged by the work that you're doing for the lives of people. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Recreation and Parks Committee. Councilmember Craig chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in the Recreation and Parks Committee, we have ordinance 0235-2014 to authorize the appropriation of $25,000, and the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to transfer an appropriate $25,000 from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with Chick Harley Memorial Garden, Inc., to authorize the expenditure of $25,000 from the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into an agreement with Chick Harley Memorial Garden, Inc., for costs associated with site grading and hard surface installation for the creation of a new neighborhood garden honoring Chick Harley. This allocation will support the development of Chick Harley Memorial Garden. I'm going to ask Ms. Lucy Wolf if she would approach the podium and speak on this issue. I know that she and others have been working hard on this issue.
Thank you, Chairman Craig, Chairman Klein, President Ginther, members of council. It is my pleasure to be here to witness this legislation for the Chick Harley Memorial Garden. I'm just going to give you a little bit of history about Chick Harley, why he's important to us. A hundred years ago, a teenager named Charles Harley was living with his family in the duplex at 687-689 South Champion Avenue. His peers had nicknamed him Chick because his family had moved to Columbus from Chicago while living at this location. Chick was a student and a star athlete at East High School. As many of us know, Chick would graduate from East and enroll in the Ohio State University. His star talents would amaze the sports fans that increasingly clogged Ohio field with each succeeding game. Athletic Director Lynn St. John saw the need for a larger venue for football in the Ohio Stadium. Later called the house, that later called the house that Harley built was born. Chick changed Columbus from a baseball town to a football town in a mere four years. He is the true creator of Buckeye Nation that we know today. He lost only one game in his career at Ohio State, the last one against Illinois. This would be the beginning of many mental problems that Chick would endure. He only played one year in pro football and was diagnosed with dementia-pray-cocks, which we now realize was a result of untreated concussions he sustained throughout his athletic career. At his death in 1974, Woody Hayes chose football team captains, including Archie Griffin, as pallbearers for Chick's funeral. In 1986, the duplex on Champion was torn down. The vacant lot was purchased by Old Oaks Civic Association for a house that was going to be moved off of Livingston Avenue. When it became known that this property had historic significance, the concept of a memorial garden was created. The original design was done by Larry Walquist, Professor Emeritus of Landscape Architecture at Ohio State. The sculpture that is part of the design was generously executed by local artist Joan Boebes. We all know Joan for her umbrella girl in Schiller Park. This project has a dual purpose: to beautify a neighborhood, and to create awareness of the dangers of untreated concussions in young athletes. It is our goal to create a fund in Chick's name via Columbus Foundation to further benefit concussion research. I would like to thank Wayne LaFaber and David Fawcett of Old Oaks, who are here tonight with us, for donating the property for the garden. I also would like to thank Director McKnight for his support. I thank Molly O'Donnell and Brian Davis of the Recreation and Parks staff for assisting in bringing Larry Walquist's design into the 21st century by putting it on AutoCAD and streamlining the layout. I'd like to thank United Way for our initial neighborhood partnership grants, and Albert Holt and the Neighborhood Design Center for their logos and ongoing work with the signage that will go on the garden. And lastly, I graciously thank Mayor Coleman and the city council for the support and acknowledgement that this project is worth completing. Thank you very much.
Any questions from Ms. Wolf? Thank you so much for coming down to me.
Thank you very much.
Co-sponsor of this important initiative is Councilmember Klein. Councilmember Klein, any comments relative to this? Director McKnight, any comments?
Chairman Craig, President Ginther, members of council, I think it's been said, it's certainly a worthwhile project, and we're happy to be able to be part of it.
I want to certainly thank again Councilmember Klein for helping to shepherd this through. And if there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is ordinance 0628-2014 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a contract with Kappa for Festival Latino programming, to authorize the expenditure of $40,000 from the Recreation and Parks Fund 285, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is the city's support for Festival Latino program. Festival Latino is a free, family-friendly event, and the largest Latin event in Ohio, celebrating family and community with two days of children's activities, music, food, fashion, art, dance, from the heart of Latin America. It began as a five-year pilot project in 1996, and due to an overwhelming community response, was expanded to two days in 1997. The common elements each year have been lively Latin music and dancing, delicious Latin cuisine, and community information tents. Over the years, Festival Latino has experienced a substantial growth in the number of performing artists, workshops, vendors, participating community groups, and audience. Kappa plans, organizes, and manages Festival Latino, which at one time was coordinated by the city. Funds are needed to secure a variety of performing artists of Latino heritage, promote and market the event, recruit volunteers, host free family activities, oversee event operations, obtain required state and city permits, clean the venues to the satisfactions of the city. The partnerships through sponsorship program was created in 1995, 1995, by city council to support community groups and neighborhoods that host free, non-alcoholic events that celebrate cultural, ethnic, and artistic diversity for the entertainment and enjoyment by greater Columbus community. Director McKnight, any comments?
Councilman Craig, President Ginther, members of council, again, I think you summed it very well. It's an exciting event that's been in Columbus for many years, it's a long history, and through this funding, we're able to support it and support Kappa in their producing this event, and we look forward to continuing that support.
Thank you, Director. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, sir. That is all that I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Our next committee is the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Piece in Public Safety and Judiciary tonight is 592-2014 to authorize the appropriation of $200,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Public Safety Initiatives Fund of the Franklin County Municipal Court Judges for additional environmental staff and equipment to work with the PACE teams and to declare an emergency. I noticed that Judge Hawkins is here, Judge Barrows, Judge Barrows appears to be armed with a mic, Judge Hawkins is not. Judge, do you want to come forward? And as you're making your way forward, I'd like to give Councilmember Mills, if she wishes, an opportunity. We worked on this together as part of the general budget funding to identify additional environmental court staff and resources due to increased code enforcement with the Department of Development's PACE team, which is proactive code enforcement, that was a great acronym to come up with, that are out, because of their increased enforcement, there's going to be more resources needed on the bench, and that these resources give Judge Hawkins and his team the ability to monitor and to hold those accountable that are, that are sometimes plaguing our neighborhoods with, with unkept properties and unsafe living conditions. Judge Hawkins?
Thank you. And I just want to take a moment here tonight and thank city council, and particularly Councilmembers Klein and Mills, for meeting with Judge Barrows and I back then to get us started through this process, and for the, you know, the help out with additional resources for the Environmental Court, as you indicated, Councilwoman Klein. The addition of this new PACE team, along with the continued efforts by City Attorney Pfeiffer in his office, the Environmental Court's going to be even more busier than it normally is, and that's good, because we've got a lot of work to do. So I just want to thank you all for your support, and hopefully report back to you soon with some very positive outcomes and good results. And once again, invite you all to come down to Environmental Court, courtroom 15C, anytime to check out what we're doing down there. So thank you all once again.
Thank you, Your Honor. Any questions or comments for the judge? Thank you. Judge Barrows, do you have any other additional comments?
No, thank you very much, Councilmember.
Okay, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
The final piece is 676-2014 to authorize and direct the mayor of the city of Columbus to accept a sub-grantee award through the FY 2013 Paul Coverdale National Forensic Science Improvement Act via the State of Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services to authorize Jamie Sinclair, crime lab manager, as the official city representative to the act, or to act in connection with the sub-grant, to authorize an appropriation of $14,605.47 from the unappropriated balance of the general government grant fund to the Division of Police to cover the cost of the sub-grant project, and to declare an emergency. I'd like to give Director Jean Gardella the opportunity to talk about this grant, as well as give the council an update of where the city is in some of the news coming out of the crime lab.
Safety Chair Klein, President Ginther, members of council, this particular ordinance, I think it's been close to 10 years now that the federal government has allowed us to have the Coverdale grant, this is probably one of the smaller ones that we've received. With this, we'll send many of our forensic scientists for training, they'll review document examination, firearms, training, and also narcotics. This particular grant won't be associated with any of the recent developments with respect to the DNA standards. Last week, Police Chief Jacobs issued obviously a statement with regard to some of the standards, a review of our DNA statistics and our testing. Obviously, we are going to follow Mayor Coleman's advice, and with, for transparency, and seek an independent review of not only our own internal review, which we'll do of these cases, but also just an internal review of our procedures as well. And once that is done, we will share the results of that review with, with council and the community. And so we'll be off and already doing some internal reviewing, and probably coming forward if we, if necessary, to enter into agreement for a special review of that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you for your comments. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Moving on to utilities, 454-2014 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with the Ryder Company for the 2013 general construction project for the Division of Sewerage and Drains, to authorize the transfer within of $715,000 and the expenditure of up to $2,215,000 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And that's all, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. President Protem Miller chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In the Public Service and Transportation Committee tonight, we have 694-2014 to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with the Shelley Company to provide for the payment of the Contract and Construction Administration expansion services in connection with the resurfacing program, to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer $9,694,930.33 from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Streets and Highway Bonds Fund, to authorize the city auditor to appropriate $9,694,930.33 within the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $9,694,930.33 from the Streets and Highway Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency. I would like to first to request to amend, as submitted to the clerk?
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
697-2014 to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with the Shelley and Sands Incorporated in connection with the Operation Safe Walks Joyce Avenue Phase II project, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer funds between the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and the Local Street Improvement Fund, to appropriate and authorize the expenditure of $6,199,485.34, or so much as may be necessary for the Operation Safe Walks Joyce Avenue Phase II project from the Local Street Improvement Fund, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer funds between the Storm Sewer Bonds Fund and the Storm Sewer Grant Fund, to appropriate and authorize the expenditure of $3,960,886.72, or as much as may be necessary for Operation Safe Walks Joyce Avenue project within the Storm Sewer Grant Fund for the Department of Public Utilities, and to declare an emergency.
an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
717-2014 to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation and a yet-to-be-named vendor for the purchase of Rock Salt based on the terms of cooperative purchase contract to be established by ODOT, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish blanket purchase orders for Rock Salt, to authorize the expenditure of $1,737,000 from the Municipal Model Vehicle License Tax Fund, $15,000 from the Sewerage System Operation Fund and $50,000 from the Water Systems Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. And all of us know how important this Rock Salt is after this past winter. And the key word is "past." If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Can I go on to technology? In technology, we have 390-2014 to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to renew a contract with Emerson Network Power Liebert Services Incorporated, formerly known as Liebert Global Services, for annual maintenance and related services associated with the uninterrupted power supply systems, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code to authorize the expenditure of $64,553.78 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Internal Services Fund and to declare an emergency. And actually, in this bid waiver, it was actually Liebert Services is actually the only factory authorized service provider for the UPS equipment used at the city's data center. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
513-2014 to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to renew and modify an agreement with Ornet OSU for existing VMware software licensing, maintenance and support services and to purchase additional VMware licenses, maintenance support and training to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, to authorize the expenditure of $163,448.26 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Internal Service Fund and to declare an emergency. In this competitive bidding provision waiver, there is a special immediate need to purchase these new licenses and this was from servers previously managed by the Police Division. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
And last in technology is 684-2014 to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to renew an agreement with biased corporations for Oracle software maintenance and support services to waive the competitive bidding provisions in the Columbus City Codes, to authorize the expenditure of $582,867.1 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Internal Service Fund and to declare an emergency. And there's actually not enough time to go through the competitive bidding provisions in order to keep the Oracle software and support services running. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
And that is all we have, Technology Committee, tonight. President Ginter.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Miller. Our next committee is the Development Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. Tonight in development, I have the following ordinance beginning with 0670-2014 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with the Greater Columbus Chamber of Commerce to pursue federal funding for projects within the City of Columbus and Franklin County region, to authorize the expenditure of $37,500 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. I'm going to ask Michael Hartley, Vice President of Government Relations for the Chamber, to approach the podium. I want to share that this contract is a cooperative funding agreement between the Columbus Chamber and the City of Columbus in pursuant of some federal funding for transportation and infrastructure improvement projects within the City of Columbus as well as Franklin County. This is work that will be aligned with the base realignment and closure, federal defense alignment strategy. And as a growing city, the 15th largest city, joining other major metropolitan groups to request federal funding is in our best interest. I want to list some of our collaborative partners, which I'm sure Mr. Hartley may also go over, but this collaborative effort involves the Greater Columbus Chamber, City of Columbus, Franklin County, the Ohio State University, the Columbus Partnership, the Central Ohio Transit Authority, Columbus Regional Airport Authority, the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority and the Columbus Downtown Development Corporation. Again, all of the services will be a shared benefit, not only to the city as well as the Chamber, and this legislation represents a portion of payment for a consultant to assist in this work. Mr. Hartley, would you share some additional comments about the benefit of this partnership?
Thank you very much, Council President Ginter, Chair Mills and Members of the Council. Thank you for allowing me to give some brief remarks regarding funding provided by the City of Columbus for the Columbus Region Federal Funds Group and the BRAC Federal Defense Facility Committee. The Federal Funds Group is a public-private partnership that was created over a decade ago to address the federal issues of importance for the Columbus community within the public and private sectors. The concept behind the Federal Funds Group is to utilize the combined leverage of its members to enact favorable legislation or attain grant opportunities for its members and/or regional interests. The Federal Funds Group is comprised of the funding members, which Councilmember Mills did a fine job of labeling, the City of Columbus, Franklin County, CDC, Ohio State, MORPC, the CRAA, which is the Airport Authority, COTA, CMHA, Columbus Partnership and the Columbus Chamber. The Chamber operates as the managing entity of the Federal Funds Group. The funding provided by the members is used to retain advocacy firm Holland and Knight, who have been retained since 2009. Every year, the Federal Funds Group worked to compile a list of federal priorities that represent the vital projects and ongoing issues of the Columbus region. For 2014, these priorities include the RNC DNC Conventions, MAP 21 Reauthorization, which is transportation, Neighborhood Choice Implementation Grant, which we just had Department of HUD in last week, and we're a finalist for $30 million grant, Manufacturing Research Opportunities and the Tiger Six Grants. One of the best-known successes of this group was back in 2012 when the Federal Funds Group was leading the effort to attain $15 million for the Tiger Four Grant for the Rick and Baker Connector. In addition to the Federal Funds Group, it's collaborating with the Columbus BRAC Region Defense Facility Committee effort. This effort is also part of this funding request and is managed by Columbus 2020 and the Columbus Chamber. Steve Tugan of Kegler Brown Hill and Ritter has been retained because of the previous work on a very successful 2005 BRAC effort for the Columbus region. Additional funders include Franklin County, Columbus 2020, the Airport Authority and the City of Whitehall. The current BRAC effort focuses on the coordination of the Columbus region community to support, defend and promote the defense facilities within the region. The three main facilities are DSCC, the Rick and Baker Air Base, and Newark Port Authority, which would be the Boeing facility. In total, the Columbus region has over 13,000 defense-related jobs with a nearly $3 billion economic impact. We see this as an economic development issue and this is an industry that we need to protect and to grow. The Columbus Chamber and its partners in the public-private Federal Funds Group and the BRAC committees were respectively asked for the support of this legislation. Thank you for allowing me to testify and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley, and I appreciate you sharing some examples of what this joint effort can do, not only for our region, but certainly for our city. And it can mean a great growth in terms of economic development and certainly that means jobs. So the impact is great for the entire city, for individuals who are looking for work. The more successful we are in these joint efforts, the better off we'll all be. And that, again, is not just for our great city, but also for the region as a whole. I wanted to thank the Chamber and all the other partners that did a fine job on Thursday, had the opportunity to be in a part of the HUD visit, and thank you, Councilmember Tyson, for joining as well. We were a very tough competitor and I think we'll move forward. I'm very confident and I probably look forward to celebrating, and I'm going to claim that. And I think that all the partners did a fine job in displaying one of the city's greatest neighborhoods, but also showing how we collectively work together. And I think that's our strong suit that we showed to HUD and all the folks who are visiting, the collective work that we do together throughout the city, but wrapping our arms around one neighborhood for success. I think Director Shoney and his team should be proud of the work and working with the community as well as all the other partners, CMHA and the others, that put on a good showing for HUD. And certainly, we've all seen the benefit of the other projects that you listed as well. Are there any other comments or questions? If none, I move for passage.
Thank you.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance 0673-2014 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with Homes on the Hill Community Development Corporation for the implementation of the Landlord Engagement Action Network, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of $25,000 from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund and to declare an emergency. Councilmember Klein is a co-sponsor on this legislation and I'd like to turn the floor over to Councilmember Klein if he has any comments. If not, I'll ask Nikki Brandon, Deputy Director for the Department of Development, to add any additional comments related to this legislation. Deputy Director Brandon.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Mills, President Ginter and Members of Council. I do appreciate this legislation coming forward and thank you for your support of this. Homes on the Hill CDC is proposing to implement a responsible landlord initiative in an effort to reduce blight and decrease the incidence of absentee landlords. Through various surveys and community meetings, Hilltop residents have voiced concerns surrounding absentee landlords, which result in blighted properties. Lean, which we are calling this, brings together landlords and concerned residents and/or neighborhoods to improve the quality of rental properties, which is very important to what we are doing in the Department of Development. As a first step, Lean will organize its operations and establish regular educational activities for landlords. Lean would be led by a steering committee comprised of representatives from responsible landlords, code enforcement, neighborhood leaders and neighborhood groups such as the area commission, civic association, block watches, et cetera. At this time, I believe Belkus is here to speak on this and so I do want to give them an opportunity if that is what they wish to do.
Hello, everyone. Again, my name is-
Excuse me, Belkus. I'll call you up in just a second. Closing comments, just to make sure we can get you on record. Give me just one second. Thank you, Deputy Director. It's okay. I wanted to make sure that part of the comments related to this initiative, I think, is important, is that the conversation that will happen among the community members and landlords and tenants, and I think that conversation is what's going to help us address the blight. And so I think that's one of the great outcomes. Want to, again, thank Councilmember Klein for leading this effort and also thanking the folks at Homes on the Hill. I know oftentimes when working in neighborhoods, there's always trying to satisfy all the stakeholders in terms of improving the neighborhood, and I'm glad to see that this communication, this is one vehicle where the communication will get stronger and get some work done. And I believe we do have a speaker. Belkus Sean Hals, I believe I've pronounced your name correctly. If you would please approach the podium, state your first and last name and any organizations you represent. You have three minutes to share your comments related to ordinance 0673. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, my name is Belkus Sean Hals and I'm the Executive Assistant at Homes on the Hill CDC. And I just wanted to approach you all in thanks of your generous support for our Landlord Engagement Action Network, Lean. We're just really excited to begin providing services just to fill educational gaps among landlords and tenants and, you know, reduce blight on the west side of Columbus. We're having our first roundtable community session this Thursday, April 3rd, from 6:30 to 7:30 PM. So all interested parties are more than welcome. And if anyone would want more information about it, they can reach me at 614-275-4663. And again, thank you, council and everyone who's been really supportive. So it's really great to see this come to fruition. So thank you very much.
Thank you again. Appreciate it. If there are no other comments, Councilmember Klein.
I was premature in dismissing your opportunity to speak, Councilmember Mills. So thank you. I'm hopeful that this program, which is started on the west side, could be an impetus to grow throughout the entire Columbus community. So we'll be watching to see the successes that you have and the platforms that are created through Homes on the Hill and hopefully be able to replicate this in other areas and bridge the gap between landlords and tenants in the hope of staving off what has become some potential problematic areas in those relationships that have led to increased code, increased risk for health and safety of the residents. And so I'm eager to see what the results are and certainly appreciate the Chair for letting me join on this legislation and, again, apologize for not accepting your first offer to speak, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Better late than ever. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance 0725-2014 to authorize the appropriation of $83,860 from the unappropriated balance of the Urban Development Action Grant Fund to the Department of Development Economic Development Division, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to make storefront renovation grants under the Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization and Mile on High Programs, to authorize the expenditure of $83,860 from the Urban Development Action Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage. Oh, I believe I have a speaker. My apologies. Yes, I do. My apologies. I need to resend the move for passage. I believe Trent Smith is here to speak on this ordinance. Mr. Smith, if you'll please approach the podium. Please state your first and last name and any organizations that you represent, and you have three minutes to share your comments related to ordinance 0725-2014. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Chair Mills, President Ginter and Councilmembers. I am Trent Smith. I'm the Director for the Franklinton Board of Trade and that organization is the organization that actually implements the NCR program for the Franklinton neighborhood. And I simply want to thank you for the continued funding of this program. And one of the things I always like to make sure that people realize about this is that while this is a grant program, this absolutely does require the business owners to have skin in the game. They don't just get this money for free without having their own investment as part of this. And a couple of successes I want to share with you that happened just last year, and this was through our partnership with the Neighborhood Design Center, Al Berthold and his team. These guys really helped these business owners see what the vision is that their storefronts could look like. And one of the great things about it is that we had a couple of businesses last year who did these, utilized this grant funding, that actually went well beyond what the dollars that they had to put in as far as just meeting the requirements for the grant. We had one that went, you know, actually $20,000 beyond what the required investment was to get these grant funds. And we actually have another one that we completed just this past year, who is actually now looking at just doing a complete new wing of his building as a result of the, kind of the motivation that he saw after the small investment that was done using the NCR funds. He's now thinking about doing a much larger renovation right on Broad Street, which is exactly what we want to see happening because that's the area that we need to see the most impact taking place so that it can then bleed through the other streets of the Franklinton neighborhood. So while the individual investment of dollars is small per project, the individual impact is huge. And we're seeing that with these property owners wanting to take on more and more of the financial responsibility for those improvements, not just relying on the grant funds. So that's what I wanted to make sure that you understood that and make sure that the listening audience understood also, that it's not just a grant, it actually requires investment. And so we thank you for that and we hope to see this continue throughout the foreseeable future.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And I'm apologetic for skipping over because that is a very important piece and component to this that is important to share with the community and also as we look at the Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Program as a whole and its investment, its ability- investment, its ability to have ripple effects in some of the other neighborhoods, I think that's important to understand that part of it as we look at what are the changes and what are the places, how we look at the NCR funds and how they can be applied to all over throughout the city, and where we currently have districts, we're looking at some of the things where we can have a greater impact because of the ripple that happens when these dollars are applied to a neighborhood. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now, if there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Chairwoman Mills, if you would be willing, what I'd like to do is recess Regular Meeting Number 17, and reconvene for zoning, and come back for the Environment Committee.
Yes, thank you, President Ginther.
Entertain a motion to recess Regular Meeting Number 17. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We will reconvene for zoning in just a few minutes. Regular Meeting Number 18 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there is not.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are none.
Thank you. We will now go to the Zoning Committee. President Protam Miller chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
In the zoning committee tonight, we have one item. It's 429-2014 to rezone 6490 Harlem Road, being 16.4 plus or minus acre, located on the east side of Harlem Road, 342 plus or minus feet south of Central College Road from our rural district to PUD 8 Plan Unit Development District. And, let's see. And this received the city department approval and the Area Commission, and if there's no questions or comments, I would like to request to amend to emergency.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you very much.
And that is all we have zoning tonight, President Ginther.
Nothing else to come before zoning this evening? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Regular Meeting Number 18 is adjourned. Entertain a motion to reconvene Regular Meeting Number 17.
So moved.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Regular Meeting Number 17 is reconvened. We will now go to the Environment Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in Environment Committee, I'd like to present ordinance 0625-2014 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an agreement with the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission for the purposes of providing funding and support for the Franklin County Greenways and Water Quality Program for fiscal year 2014, authorize expenditure of $26,100 from the Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund, $23,280 from the Water Operating Fund, $6,960 from the Storm Sewer Operating Fund, $3,660 from the Electricity Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next in Environment, I have ordinance 0447-2014 to authorize acceptance of a grant totaling $240,727 from the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio to continue the city's environmental stewardship program through 2015, to authorize the execution of a modification to the associated grant agreement between the city and SUECO, to authorize the transfer of the General Fund contribution for 2014 in the amount of $263,140 to the General Government Grant Fund, to authorize a transfer of Water Operating Fund contribution for 2014 in the amount of $63,675 to the General Government Grant Fund, to appropriate the sum of the aforementioned amounts, which total $567,542 to the General Government Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage and call for a voice vote.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills-
Yes.
Paley-
Yes.
Tyson-
Yes.
I'd like to make one announcement in Environment. I just want to thank all of the folks who were Green Spotlight Awards winners, helping to support the environment of our great city, and with that, I'd like to move to Rules and Reference. President Ginther, if you'll allow me. Tonight in Rules and Reference, I have ordinance 0740-2014 to amend various sections in Chapters 585, 587, and 589 of the Columbus City Code, in order to transfer the power to approve all vehicle-for-hire owners and drivers licenses, vehicle-to-vehicle transfers, and owner-to-owner transfers from the Vehicle for Hire Board to the Director of Public Safety, and to repeal the prior existing sections being amended. This particular ordinance amending the following chapters was addressed at a special meeting for the Vehicle for Hire Board in December 12, 2013, and when it came to the city's attention, that certain provisions relating to the transfer issuance of new licenses were ambiguous. Upon further examination by the City Attorney's Office, it was determined that the Vehicle for Hire Board was not adhering to a strict interpretation of these provisions. For as long as staff and board members could recall, the Department of Public Safety License Section had transferred and issued new licenses for drivers and owners as the applications were processed on a rolling basis. The Vehicle for Hire Board would then vote on approval of these transfers and issuance at its monthly meetings. This allowed for applications to be processed in a timely and business-friendly manner. The City Attorney's Office determined that this was not as strict adherence to the code as it is written pursuant to Chapters 585, 587, and 589. Once these have been approved, the Board will then give authority to the Director of Public Safety to issue a license and/or transfer of these licenses. On December 17, 2013, the License Section notified the Vehicle for Hire Board that it would not issue any new taxicab, livery, pedicab, or horse carriage license until the Board approved the license. Again, these are changes that are necessary to continue the strict adherence to the code. I'm going to allow the opportunity for City Attorney to provide some comments, and then also offer the opportunity to my co-sponsor of this legislation, Councilmember Klein. City Attorney Pfeifer, you have any comments?
Councilmember Mills, no. You thoroughly explained the situation. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein, you have any comments? If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have this evening.
You must have explained it thoroughly, if two lawyers passed up on the opportunity to comment. Our next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. In the Administration Committee this evening, we have ordinance 0414-2014 to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology and the Director of Human Resources Department to renew an annual software maintenance and support contract with Intellinetics Incorporated for a document management system utilized by the Human Resources Employee Benefits Risk Management Division, to waive the competitive bidding provision of the Columbus City Code, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,800 from the Department of Technology Internal Service Fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is requesting a waiver of competitive bidding. Although Intellinetics uses resellers for Intelerview licenses, resellers are not permitted to bid on annual software maintenance and support agreements for existing Intellinetics customers. As the city purchased its Intelerview software from Intellinetics, we must purchase annual support and maintenance from Intellinetics, thus the reason for the waiving of competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code in accordance with Section 39, 329, 27. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have this evening, and President Ginther.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Anything else to come before council this evening? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. We do have one on-agenda speaker that will take momentarily. Second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned.